Hello and welcome to the Clayton Chamber of Commerce's 2022 Platforms at the Podium for the Johnston County Public School Board candidates. We welcome you and thank you for joining us and hope you find these videos informational and helpful as you make your decision on who to vote for, for these important candidates in our public school system. I am Brad Palmer. I am chairman of the Clayton Chamber of Commerce Legislative and Governmental Affairs Committee. And this committee, along with the chamber staff, have endeavored to bring to you the most information possible to help you make an informed decision.
I am a product of the public schools. So I went to public schools all through my elementary age, high school age, university agent, graduate degree. So I have personal experience as a product of the public schools. I'm also a parent of public school educated children. So my daughter graduated from Corinth holders in 2018. All of my eight kids had gone to public school in some form up until 2020 when they shut the schools down. I'm also educated as a teacher. So I carried license sure in two different states. So I was a teacher in public schools while I got my graduate work completed. So I have that experience, which is, you know, I understand the public schools. Then I also have experience advocating for our kids because I saw our kids failing my own kids. So I saw our schools failing my own children. So I advocated, I started with just the teachers and the administrators and I saw that I wasn't going to be able to get anywhere. So I started advocating in social media and then I went and wrote up ads and those were put at the national level, some of them. And I've also worked with, in a grassroots position with the John Locke Foundation. So I have a large degree of experience to draw from and to bring to this board. And I really believe it makes me the most qualified to sit in this position.
I have experience in the classroom. So I was a high school teacher for approximately seven and a half years. And then I taught at Archer Lodge Middle for three and a half years. And I loved being in the classroom. It was a joy to be with the students. And I also have experience at Department of Social Services and Child Protective Services. I think my experience and background gives me a lot of insight into what really happens in the schools and in the classrooms. And my background in child development allows me to know what children need and what our teachers need as far as like having been in the classroom and how our admin affects our schools and our students and just how it looks all the way around.
A little bit about me, I was born and raised in Johnston County. Graduated from Smithfield Summer High School and a product of Johnston County Public Schools. After I graduated, I went to Wayne Community College and got my trade degree in mechanical engineering technology. And I now am a robotic programmer for Spirit Air Systems in Kinston. I believe the biggest qualifier is positive leadership. The board needs positive leadership to lead our county to a better school system. And not just in the workforce have I demonstrated positive leadership, but in the community as well. I believe that's important. Whether it's being on my parent advisory council in the school system, being a leader at my local Cub Scout den, or also being in the community with the church, serving on their board of directors and providing leadership is there as well.
First, I'm a lifelong resident of Johnston County. I graduated from the Johnston County School System, as did my wife and our four children. We also have four grandchildren who have also attended Johnston County School System. I am the chairman of the Smithfield Planning Board, vice chairman of the Smithfield Board of Adjustment. I am chairman of the Smithfield Rural Fire Tax Committee and I am also a past member of the South Smithfield Elementary School Student Parent Advisory Board. I'm not a politician and I've never held a political office. I'm not an educator. We don't need more educators on the school board. I am the average citizen, just like you, and I want to bring accountability back to the school board and the school system. I want to bring trust back to the school board and the school system. And how do we do that? First, we need to get rid of personal agendas that the school... Second, the school board needs to make all decisions transparent. Third, we need to keep an open line of communication between the school board and the county commissioners and the citizens of Johnston County. I am indebted to the Johnston County School Board for a great education I received. To repay that debt, when I'm on the school board, I promise to work the hardest of any school board member to make Johnston County schools the best school in the state of North Carolina.
Hi, I'd like to thank the chamber for doing this service for the community. It's a great service. You know, Johnston County Public Schools is the only school system our family has ever known. We've had, we've been involved in the schools for 12 years with one or more children in the school system. I've seen the good, the bad, the in-between. We're on a really good trajectory now and we need good, steady leadership to move us forward. You know, this is the only school system we've ever known and we are committed to this school system. We never cut and run when things got bad. I'm involved in a parent advisory council at Triple S. I'm on the PTA at the Innovation Academy. I'm involved with Partnership for Children and some of its literacy efforts. And I volunteered in the schools both in Johnston and in Wake County. You know, I'm really proud of the coalition we built. I think I've brought, I've built the broadest, most inclusive coalition of all the candidates and that will serve me really well. I have the ability to lead, to listen to people from all different backgrounds and to build strong, respectful relationships. You know, in that regard, I think I can build really strong working relationships with the other board members and with the board of commissioners. I've already done that. And I just want us to move away from the drama. I want us to have a steady, smart, professional school board that really puts the kids first. Thank you.
I think that as far as qualifications for being a board of education member, I think one of the main things for me is that I've been there, done that. As a retired special education teacher, athletic director, coach, I've been in the system. I was in the system when we were the top of the state. I was in the system when we had people coming into our county to see how we did things. And I guess I'm old enough to recognize the good old days, so to speak. But the key thing is that we stuffed the pieces in place to do that again. You know, we have lots of people telling us different things, but we have the pieces of the puzzle we need to make Johnston County schools at the top of the state again. You know, and from my experience working with the different people, special education, general education, and as a coach, athletic director, I had the opportunity to work with a wide range of people to get the needs of our people. You know, it's not us versus them. We need to understand our stakeholders. As a lifelong resident of Johnston County, I also understand the community schools' approach and how important those schools are in the local communities. And that's important as well because you have to understand the impact. We want our communities to have ownership and take ownership of those schools. That's how we improve. Community schools are vital part of being the top of the state. You know, I was in the system, as I said, when the wheels fell off also. I know what that looks like. And we don't want that to happen again. And while we want to continue the upward trend and as long as we're willing to roll our sleeves up, work together, we can put Johnston County back at the top of the state again.
So my campaign slogan is "Restore the Flame for Learning." And it's unfortunate that our flame for learning has been diminished over the last seven years. I watched it happen with my own kids. So our future is bright if we put the right people in power, the right people to control the vision of our schools. I believe I'm one of those people. I believe that because I've worked so hard to find out how this operates. So a bureaucrat doesn't bring us things and we just check a box and things keep getting worse. So we aren't controlled locally necessarily. We controlled by federal money that comes in and that's ESA. That's like 3,500 pages that we have to follow. Then we've got our state legislator, that's 701 pages of general statute we have to follow. We have the NCDPI and we have the state school board standards. I've read most of that, portions of ESA, which comes from the ESEA, which is a federal 1965 statute. I understand how this works and how we get back on track and how we navigate so many different things to make our students successful again. We need direct instruction. We need to put our teachers at the front of the classroom, let them shine again. We have got to change the direction and get the focus back on four key points. Achievement, attainment, academics, and giving authority back to the parents over what's happening inside our schools.
For the future of Johnston County Public Schools, I would really like to see us, obviously, as probably most people have said, back at the top. I believe Johnston County has amazing teachers. We have great admin and we have the potential to get there. The way I see us getting there is we are really focused on our teachers and our students. We are holding our teachers and our students accountable. We are expecting excellence and we are requiring that our admin hold our students and our teachers to those expectations. I believe that with high expectations, people rise to meet those. And when we expect a lot out of our students, most of the time our students are going to rise to that occasion. I would specifically want to make sure that we have all of our admins onboard across county. I think what we are really missing right now is we have kind of, some schools do things different than others and we need more coherence across county as to how our students are held accountable and what expectations are being set and met.
The future of Johnston County Public Schools are bright. Coming out of the slump of COVID and then being in the lower percentile in Johnston County, we have a great staff, students and parents that have worked hard this year to bring their scores back up to be a leader in Johnston County. We have a long way to go, but we need board members that will sit down with parents, teachers, students, find the needs of our county and implement those needs in a positive direction. I believe I will be that candidate to sit down at the table and listen and implement those.
The future of Johnston County Schools is bright. A few weeks ago, DPI announced that Johnston County had 30 schools that ranked in the top 20% for academic growth in the state of North Carolina. And that is out of 2,352 total schools in the state. We have to keep moving forward. Now, how do we do that? First, we have to retain our teachers. And we have to recruit the best teachers that's not only in the state of North Carolina, but also in our country. We retain our teachers by not only giving them better pay or incentives, but teachers need support from their administrators and from the county office. And they need to be felt appreciated by more, more appreciated by the job that they're doing. Must improve on our facilities and put our students in a good learning environment. I think we need to keep administrators in the same school for longer periods of time. This will give the administrators a chance to learn the teachers, the students, and also the parents more. The future of Johnston County Schools is bright and now it's our time to shine.
Well, I have no doubt that in the future, we can become one of the top school districts in the state. We're already on that trajectory. We have great leadership from Dr. Bracy and his team. You know, I think they're on the right path with some of their approaches to really drilling down on the data and holding the principals accountable, making sure we're looking at that data throughout the year, doing walkthroughs with the schools and looking at best practices and being consistent with the curriculum throughout all the schools. I think if we keep on that trajectory and follow those practices, we'll keep seeing improvements in our schools. It's really important, I believe, that we focus on early literacy, that we really look at ways that we can make sure that all of our kids are grade level, reading proficient by the end of the third grade. We're not really even close to where we need to be on that. And that sort of reflects the national trends as well. But whether it's, whether we're in line with the nation or the state or whatever, we do need to do better in that respect because that sets kids up for success long-term. So I really want us to focus on that. I want our choice programs to be strong, you know, so that all of our kids are on a good track for either to be college ready or career ready. We need to work with our commissioners, of course, to have adequate funding and adequate facilities. I think we need to have a strong bond program to build and build new schools, to expand others, to do things like upgrade our HVAC systems and our security on campuses. I think we can do all of this and be really strong fiscally and build a relationship of trust with our commissioners.
I think as far as my, what I see a vision for Johnston County in the future, I see Johnston County as a model for the state. What I see us doing is increasing the number of trade vocation opportunities we have. I see us working with partnerships, with businesses in the community. I think it has to be an understanding that not every area of the county needs the same thing. Our high schools are all different. We have a really, really diverse county. If you go across our county, we still have a few rural areas left. And what those high schools need may be different than what our Clayton needs. And what we have to do is understand that through those partnerships with businesses and with, it doesn't matter what size the business, that that's how we develop our workers, that that's how we provide our workers for the, for the communities. And that's what I see Johnston County as, is just a model for, model for the state and how to get things done, similar to how we did things years ago when we were near the top of the state. And that's why I think it's critical to have someone who's been there, done that and understands the system. You know, you can, you can talk about lots of different things, it's not in different places, but it's important to have someone who's been there, done that, who's walked the walk along with talking the talk. And that's what I've done. And again, that's why I encourage you to roll your sleeves up, get onboard, let's work together, let's stop the bickering, let's stop the drama, and let's make Johnston County Schools the best school system in the state.
Johnston County Public Schools is the largest employer in the county itself. So we need to make sure that the people that are controlling the largest amount of employees inside the county know what they're doing. And I plan to be that person that's involved, listening, paying attention. We need to make sure that every school has a principal that's installed and doing what's right by the students and the parents and the taxpayer of this county. I think when we can get our own employment situation right, we can help the employers of the county. We've already got a great start. We have a program with Caterpillar right now where they take juniors of our high schools and they do an 18-month training program. We have programs with Grifols where they do an assemblyman, assembly line program, program training. We have other CTE programs that are great as well. We need to expand on those. We need to build, build back our trade and vocation program because part of my attainment plan is understanding that everybody has different talents and gifts. We need to reach out to the kids that are artists and the kids that maybe are musically inclined and we need to meet their needs and we need to have a plan for them going out of high school. So we can do that and we can get together and have partnerships. I would like to see a middle college broaden where we can have a hub for a lot of those different vocations, but we also need to bring it down to the lower grades. We need to start this in middle school. We need to have trade classes there. We need to have chemistry and vocational classes at the middle school that are getting kids involved and actively learning.
I would love to see our CTE classes and our vocational classes expanded more. We are federally funded for our CTE classes, which really helps those classes to have all that they need in the schools. In those classes, we have our trade programs and it's really helpful to the kids and also to our community because the kids kind of learn what they like, what they don't like before they're out in the community. And it also teaches them valuable skills that they can use later on. Right now, we do have an awesome trades program. I think we could even increase that with more workability with our partners in Johnston County and also at Johnston Community College. We already have a great partnership, but I think we could expand it even more to offer even more programs for our kids so they can really have that true hands-on experience in the workforce before they are sent off to college and really have no clue what they want to do. I'm kind of dealing with that with my son right now. And so it's nice to have those hands-on experiences where they can see what they actually do in a day, learn the skills. And with it being federally funded through CTE, that helps us a lot as well.
Trade programs are the closest to my heart because I live this life day in and day out. We need to make sure that all children in Johnston County Public Schools are successful when they leave our high schools, especially in a situation like mine where I couldn't go to a university. We need to be providing trade programs in the high schools and working with our local companies to provide those trades. We need to take an inventory with companies in our county, ask them what they need, coordinate with them, and they are, they would be more than willing to set up a plan to provide training for our upcoming workers within the county. It's a win-win for the county. It will make us successful.
First, to answer the finance portion of this question, we must closely work with our county commissioners who fund our school system. Trust and transparency is a huge factor between these two boards. When I'm elected, I will ask the finance committee from the Johnston County School Board to meet monthly with county commissioners to go over expenditures from the money that they have received from the county commissioners. Now, to address the workforce needed for employees, we have to keep expanding our career technical education programs. We have many career technical education programs already in our schools. But we must partner with local industries and pharmaceuticals and get them to help us create more programs to better fit their workforce needs. We also need to have internships placed between these industries and pharmaceuticals. In today's world, when I went to school, it was all about going to college. In today's world, a person can make a great living by training with a trade through our CTE program in our school system.
Well, I think that it all starts with the basics. You know, when we think about workforce needs, we think about, you know, the career and technical education programs in the, in the later years. But really, it starts at the beginning. And I talked about early literacy and that's so important. If kids aren't on track to be successful academically, then, then, you know, they're going to struggle. They're going to struggle their whole way through K through 12. And, you know, they might have a hard time finding employment or being the, you know, the right type of worker that our, that our employers are looking for. And so really focusing on early literacy and grade level reading proficiency is critical. You know, our choice programs, that's, you know, really kind of start in middle school and high school in particular, they have to be strong. You know, we need to have good career and technical education programs. Clayton has just, Clayton High has just started a health science, you know, in a program. I think that's, stuff like that is really important, especially with all our biopharma and life sciences employers in the region. You know, we need to focus on growing our own teachers and firefighters and EMTs. And so in that respect, we really need to support the Joko Teach program and possibly expand it. We really need to support our fire sciences program. Those are critically important. And we need to have strong relationships with the community college. And again, in terms of financing, we just need to have that level of trust with our commissioners so that we can keep financing all these programs at the levels they need to be funded at.
And this, this kind of ties in with what I was saying earlier. We have to work with communities. We have to develop partnerships with our communities. You know, a lot of businesses, when they go into communities, when they go into counties, they, they want to know what kind of education system we have. Because as we bring industry in, we have, we need to provide workers for those jobs. It doesn't have Johnson County a great deal when we're bringing industry in and we're hiring from out of the county. We've got to keep those hiring in the county. And that's how we do that, by working with partnerships, by working with these businesses and by forming a closer bond. We, we've got to do something similar to what we do with Johnston Community College and some of our college prep classes. We have to look at apprenticeships, the internships with these businesses. That's how we develop our, our, our working group. And it's not a, it's not a difficult process, it's not a hard process. We, and, and this, not everybody's going to work in business. We also have to look at those hands-on trades, those vocational classes, those things in the community that, that we can do at different schools throughout the county. Because it's truly, as I said, it's truly a diverse county and we have to meet the needs of all our students, whether they choose to go to college, whether they choose to go to tech school, whether they choose to go to military, or whether they go straight to the workforce. Johnston County Schools has to be able to provide opportunities for all our students. And again, we have the pieces in place to do that. I'm comfortable in leading that effort. I just need your help.
So that is about relationships. Because the school board itself, we don't have control over growth in this county. We don't, we aren't the planning board, we are not a taxing body. We have very little control over any of that. But what we do control is our relationship with the commissioners who do those things. And we need to build back the trust with commissioners. Right now, it's probably an all-time low, given what's happened over the summer with a video recording of a current school board member talking about hiding money from the commissioners. We can never have things like that happen inside our schools, inside this relationship with the commissioners. We need to be able to advocate truly for our administrators, our principals, our kids, that we can come to them with problems like HVAC that's failing or overcapacity schools and have them trust that what we're telling them is the truth. We need to get onboard with our superintendent and develop a vision that the people of our county want to see. We know that our county is growing. There's little the school board can do about that, but what we can do is be excellent advocates and building relationships with those county commissioners that are going to benefit you, that's going to benefit the kids, because that's what this is truly about. And that's why I got in this race, because I love children, loved children my entire life. It's why I went into education, it's why I have eight of my own. And if you would give me the opportunity to be your school board member, I promise to work as diligently as I possibly can. Thank you.
With Johnston County being the fastest-growing county in the state, I think it's very important that we do make sure that we have schools that people want their children in so that they're not looking outside of our public school system. I think in order to do this, we need to make sure primarily that all of our classrooms have teachers. So we are still working through the teacher shortage right now. And I believe that having teachers in the classroom should be our number one priority. Secondary, I feel like we need to have expansion onto our schools and utilize buildings that we already have in the community as well. I know that the school bond is coming up and we, there are some new schools to be built, but I feel like we have to be able to staff those schools as well. So that is where I really want to put my biggest effort, is to make this a county where teachers want to come and work, where they want to have their career here so we can have sustainability in the classroom.
Johnston County is one of the biggest growing counties in North Carolina. It's in the top 10. We need to be ensuring that our students have a place to come whenever they arrive in Johnston County. Growth is great, but we need to have responsible growth. We've gotten behind the eight ball a little bit and need to turn the approach to be proactive at our schools. If you look at the local reports, our schools are becoming very quickly at capacity. We need to expand the schools. We need to build new schools, but we need to do it responsibly.
First, the county must provide the infrastructure such as the water and sewer so that new schools can be built. We have to build more schools to handle the growth and these schools have to be strategically located to, for the growth that's in our school, in our county, and also the overcrowding of schools. We have to keep our schools moving forward. We need to provide, retain our teachers and we need to provide extracurricular activities for new families that are moving into our area. We need to provide more sports in our schools that families are used to from the areas they're coming from. We need to provide more buses and bus drivers. But the most important factor, I think, may be school safety. Mobile units are not safe and students, students are constantly walking in and out of the mobile units. The best up-to-date safety equipment also has to be purchased. And that is something that should be addressed by both the county commissioners and the school board.
When you talk about sustainable school capacity, certainly we need to have a bond program in which we build schools and expand schools and have the facilities that we need for our students. They need to be good facilities, you know, that are good learning environments and environments where teachers and staff feel, you know, proud and good about coming to work at. So that's, that's extremely important. So we need to continue to educate voters about the bond program and work with commissioners to have, you know, a series of bond referendums in which we can really catch up and fund our schools at the level we need to, their capital needs. I think in terms of, you know, quality, again, it comes to starting in the early years, focusing on the basics, grade level reading and math proficiency, having strong choice programs and really marketing those well so that folks know that things like the Innovation Academy, the IB program, Avid, Fire Science, Joko Teach, that all these programs are available to them so that they look to Johnston County Schools as their first choice for their families, for their kids, for their education. I think it's essential for any employer, and this includes, of course, schools, that we have the best staff possible. We really need strong recruitment and retention strategies for our staff. We need to separate out the TA and the bus driver duties as quickly as we can because we need to have good TAs in the classrooms, especially in those early years. And then we need to continue working with commissioners. Again, I'll just hammer home on this point, strong level of trust with them so that we can work in a partnership to make our schools as good as they possibly can be.
Obviously, with the, with the growth in the county, that's obviously not something the school board has any control over. However, the school board can do a better job in working with our county commissioners and working with our planning boards, our county planning boards, as well as in our towns. and working with our planning boards, our county planning boards, as well as in our towns. And what we have to do is, is we build schools. We have to understand that it's okay if some of those classrooms may be empty. You know, I said that since 2020. We build schools, but when we build the schools, they're already overcapacity. We build schools spread out over a huge parcel of land. I believe now the plans are to build up rather than out so much. And that's, again, that's something that I've been pushing since 2020, actually right before then, but nobody would pay any attention. But that's what we've been doing. That's what I've been pushing and that's how we, that's how we increase our capacity. Because we've got to keep our community schools approach. That's vital in what we're doing. We can't, we can't start busting our students around the county. Then we simply become a Wake County or some other county that that we simply don't want to be. We want to maintain who we are in Johnston County. And that's, those are ways we do that. We've simply, as far as, we, again, we have to understand that all these subdivisions coming in, they're not going to pay for their kids to go to school. You're not going to pay for your K-12 education. That has to come from bringing industry in. And bringing industry in comes from a solid, strong school system and that's what we have to work together to have.
Thank you for joining us and taking the time to watch these videos for this important race. We would also like to remind you to please visit our voter resource page, which can be found at the main page for the Clayton Chamber of Commerce, where you'll find additional information about the candidates and resources and the important school bond referendum, which will be on the ballot this fall. Thank you again and happy voting.